We're close to beginning to call the order. Prior to that, though, the fire department does have an announcement that they just wanted to speak and let everyone know about prior to the meeting, so any residents here could be aware. So we'll have them come to this mic right here.
Hi, my name's John Seaman. I'm the captain of the fire department here in Phillipston. As you guys drive around town, I'm sure you've seen the orange, well, blue, street signs that we have for addresses. We do have a program that we can put those up for you at your residence so that the police and the fire can find you easier. I do have an informational pamphlet up there on the table with my business card. If you're interested in getting the address marker, please send me an email to my town email, and we can work with you to get your number, and then we'll place it there for you. There's no cost at all. We had grant money that we were able to use to purchase this. So if you have any questions, feel free to talk to me after the meeting, and thank you.
Thank you, John. Are we good? All right. Okay. With that being said, it is 7:00 PM on this date, May 3rd, 2023. A quorum being present, the meeting will come to order. In calling this annual town meeting to order pursuant to a warrant duly posted and returned, I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the town meeting and attending. Your presence here and your votes is greatly appreciated by everyone here. So prior to moving forward, I'd like to take a moment for everyone that, if you're able to, rise so we can do a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance. Please be seated. So before we get into the warrant articles, there's just some housekeeping items I'd like to go over so everyone's aware of how we're going to be moving forward through this meeting. If you want to take a moment to just silence your phones, put them on the vibrator just so we don't have any loud noises right in the middle when we're trying to have the conversation. Now, as the moderator, it is my job to see that we go through all of the articles of the warrant and that we have proper discussion. We will be adhering to the rules published in The Town Meeting Times as per the bylaws of the town of Phillipston. It's a great read, especially if you want to go to sleep. I would like to also take a moment to thank the board and committees up here who give their time and energy to make this possible. Thank you. To my right, I have the finance committee, and to my left, I have town clerk, town council, the board of selectmen, as well as the town treasurer. Just to address one thing, the town council is a non-resident, so I just wanted to make sure there was no issue with him having to speak on anything if needed. Not seeing any concerns, we will be all set there. Okay. So the process that we'll be taking is I'll ask for a motion on each article, and then for a second, generally, the finance committee will speak to the motion, and then I will give it to the floor, an opportunity to discuss the motion. Now, we can talk about the article, but we're not able to talk about specific people. Keep it specific to the article and the issue at hand. Please keep the discussion in line with the scope of the article. Be aware of what has already been discussed, so we are not repeating the same points. We don't want to have a line of people saying the same exact thing over and over again. So once we've reached a point of clarity on the article, we will bring it to a vote. So if you would like to participate and be involved in the discussion or just get our attention, raise your hand, stand up, and then we're just going to have you come up to this microphone up front, and that's where we're going to have the conversation for the discussion. And if there's a line already, we'll get through everyone to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak if they have any issues that they want to bring to our attention. All right. And that is all of the housekeeping articles at this point, so we can move into the warrant.
I move the town dispense with reading the articles.
So with that motion, they will just be allowing it so we can read an abbreviation of each article. So we will move... So we're going to move to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Passes unanimously. So we'll move to Article 1.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, move to vote. All those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Passes unanimously. Move to Article 2.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Moving to Article 3.
Move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to Article 4.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Moving to Article 5.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to Article 6.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to Article 7.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
So this will be handled slightly different. As you can see in the warrant under Article 7, there are some line items that are posted there. I am going to go through each line item under the fiscal year 24 proposed number. If you have a question, please signify by just saying question. I will note it, and once we get through all of the line items, we will come back and discuss that particular question. Okay. Starting with assessors, $5,089. Board of health, $4,023. Cemetery commission, $1,057. Constable, $788. Moderator, $396. Planning board, $7,235. Board of selectmen, $10,084. Tax collector, $41,956. Town clerk, $63,554. Now, to vote on a total amount of $134,182, as there were no questions, no discussion, all those in favor of Article 7 say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, passes unanimously. Moving on to Article 8.
I move we raise and appropriate $2,635,522, transfer from cemetery sale of lots account, $5,679, and transfer from free cash, $60,000, for a total of $2,701,201 to pay the town charges for the 12-month period commenced in July 1st, 2023, and further that appointing authorities shall set salaries for personnel within the amounts appropriated hereunder in accordance with provisions of General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108.
Hearing a second. We will go through the same procedure that we did on Article 7, where I will be reading the proposed fiscal year 24 amount. If there are any questions, please stop me, and I will note, and we will continue on and return back to the questions. Starting with the board of assessors, payroll, $25,000. Expenses, $14,000. Board of selectmen, administrative assistance payroll, $88,842. Board of selectmen's office assistant payroll, $20,800. Building and groundskeeper, $35,000. Expenses, $228,250. Queen Lake payroll, $1,948. Queen Lake expense, $2,100. Capital improvement planning committee, expense, $50. Moderator, expense, $50. Finance committee, clerk payroll, $848. Expense, $300. Reserve fund, $75,000. Town accountant, payroll, $48,000. Expense, $1,000. Town clerk, assistant town clerk payroll, $4,282. Expense, $4,622. Election in Regis, $5200. Voter registration, 250. Treasurer, treasurer HR salary, $30,603. Assistant treasurer payroll, $3,850. Expense, $7,000. Tax title expenses, $20,000. Group life health, $215,809. Social Security Medicare, $20,000. Unemployment comp, $11,000. Worcester Regional Retirement, $163,953. Highway garage debt, $36,459. Queen Lake dam debt, zero. Workers' compensation, $30,672. IT, $25,000. VEDAR, $12,884. Tax collector, assistant tax collector payroll, $7,559. Expense, $7,300. Tax title, $8,000. Dispatch services, expense, $77,362. Emergency management, payroll, $6,327. Expense, $10,000. Fire department, fire chief salary, $38,776. Fire clerk payroll, zero. Fire rescue payroll, $221,579. Fire rescue expense, $69,142. Police department, police chief salary, $84,822. Chief on duty holidays, $3,263. Payroll, $276,553. Expenses, $120,160. Animal control, payroll, $5,378. Expense, $1,905. Board of health, board of health payroll, $35,240. Expenses, $43,656. Building department, payroll inspector, $18,000. Payroll clerk, $4,320. Expenses, $3,042. Inspector of barns and animals, payroll, $832. Expenses, $100. Board of appeals, clerk payroll, $849. Expenses, $120. Conservation commission, clerk payroll, $883. Expense, $2,500. Planning board, secretary payroll hourly, $5,389. Elected clerk salary, $1,575. Expense, $3,280. Consultant, $26,266. Agriculture commission, clerk payroll, $403. Expense, $1,539. Highway, payroll, $200,016. Expense, $64,700. Snow and ice, $70,000. PMS building use committee, clerk payroll, $787. Expenses, $200. PMS, janitor payroll, $10,000. Expenses, maintenance, $50,000. Cemetery commission, payroll, $16,575. Expense, $5,679. Tree warden, payroll, $1,892. Expense, $12,000. Library, payroll, $16,393. Expense, $6,777. Circulation material, state, $5,794. Recreation, expense, $5,000. Historical commission, clerk salary, $51. Expense, $50. Counsel and agent, expense, $500. Veteran services, administration, $5,517. Direct benefits, $10,000. Article grand total, $2,701,201. With no questions being provided...
Question?
Question.
I had a question on the items, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but I didn't want to interrupt.
No, perfectly fine. What was the item?
Um, finance reserve fund.
Okay. Could you come up here and just state your name and street address? I apologize, I should have identified that in the beginning of the meeting. If you are going to come up and have a conversation and provide towards the discussion, please state your name and the street address that you are living in. So any voting residents up here, any non-voting residents are located in the back, so that way we know who can speak on the floor.
Sure. Margaret News, 65 Williamsville Road. Um, I had a question on the reserve fund that we're increasing from $42,000 and change in FY '23 to $75,000 this year. That's a significant increase, and I just was kind of curious what the rationale was behind that, and then I probably will have a follow-up question.
When we did this, we decided we had an exceptional amount of free cash, so we took $30,000 from free cash and then basically raised it from the 40 to 75, using 30 of free cash, because we don't know where fuels are going, we don't know where utilities are going to go. We, and it was just like, rather than try to calculate an expense budget, it's like, maybe we need to just put a buffer, because we don't know where some of these, you know, volatile expense accounts might happen.
And although I understand that, I just want to follow with some comments and maybe a question depending on how this goes out of my mouth. I appreciate the fact that we're looking towards things that may, for the purpose of the reserve fund, as my knowledge can change, let me know, it would be for any exceptional expenses, and it would be something that would be approved by the select board as well as the finance committee. My concern here is that it is a significant increase, and if there was something that except only the money to the stabilization account, and I think that the townspeople need to have more of a voice in items that may come up like this, that we should be able to vote on as a town. I just get concerned because this means I'm taxed on this extra amount, because it is being appropriated. So although it does seem like a large amount, every single dollar in excess of the potential we needed, plus maybe a little buffer because you can't budget to use that dollar, means my taxes go up. So this is just in case, and we're at $42,000, I do think that it is, oh, what are you, $2,000 last year? It is high. I would ask a question in the past however many years, how often have we gone to this account? Is it something that we use with frequency? I don't actually have those things off the top of my head. No, did we have any, any, do we use any this year so far? Yes, we have. I'm not sure, I'm not sure off the top of my head, any questions we have yet. Sure. I appreciate it. Do we have, is there someone else here that could provide that information?
So we did actually have to ask for $15,000 from the horrible storms that we had just swept in. The highway department is inundated with hanky trees and everything else, so we needed to request some extra funding for that, to take care of that. And we also have a sensitive issue that we're dealing with, that I had to ask as the board's administrative assistant for $5,000 from it as well. That was completely unexpected. So yes, this year we have.
And in the past... I don't recall. Okay. No, that's fair enough. I'm just curious. Again, I just, I get a little freaky about this, this money that will be taxed on. But we do have, do we know how much is in our stabilization account? A little outside of our, um, we don't have stabilization in our last year now? I just sent an email. Does anybody remember the number in my email? Oh, it won't be on now. It's 700. 700, and it has a percentage of our budget that is... So we have a lot of money in stabilization, as I guess we're going with this, so we have access to funds that do require additional town input, if we need. So I just, I would like to amend this number to $50,000. So I would make a motion that this number is amended to $50,000.
Hearing a second? Testing. Sorry, everybody. Yes.
So I do have one comment to make before you vote on changing the amount from the 75 to the 50. As I said, we were using, actually, I looked at my notes, it was 35 of free cash, so I would take that 25, it would come off of the free cash that we're using. So we're still going to raise and appropriate the exact same amount.
There is a question around the details around the motion, is, are we going to be, as mentioned, the funding is coming from free cash as well as being raised and appropriated? So where is the funding that you're addressing coming from? Do you want it to be the free cash or raised and appropriate? My question.
Is that for me?
Yes.
Okay. So my amendment was to reduce the amount from 75 to 50. That $25,000 would be added money as appropriated. I have no issue taking it from free cash apart from whatever, because that to me makes much more sense for the assumption that we would be taxed on.
Just, Mr. Moderator, if I may, just as a point of clarification, so you want to, your motion is to reduce the amount that will be appropriated to the reserve fund from 75 to 50,000, and you're proposing that the amount, the source of that fund would be a reduction in the amount that will be transferred from free cash, so instead of 60?
No.
No?
No, I still want 60 from free cash transferred. I'd like the 25 to come right off of amounts appropriated, so that our tax base gets reduced.
Okay. So you want to reduce the amount that's being raised and appropriated from $2,635,522 to $2,656,10522, if my math is correct?
If you could guess the correct math, I'll bring it to you, to the opposite amount.
Thank you.
So the request to amend is going to be coming out of the raise and appropriation funds, so it'll affect the total balance. Now, I'm going to have to ask if there's any additional discussion around this amendment, because we're going to have to vote on the amendment first before the complete motion. So is there any additional discussion?
I just want to hear from finance committee how this changes things, because I know the funding was going to come from free cash, now it's going to be changed, so are we going to be using free cash at another spot? I just want clarification.
Whatever totals here is what we're going to do, depends on whether it's, whether the amendment passes, and I'll give you the totals then.
With that being said, is there any additional discussion?
I have a question. How much difference is that 25,000 actually going to make on a person's exercise tax per $100,000?
I have no way of calculating that number of taxes.
We're just going to take a moment to try and determine. The question was what the actual effect per resident on what they would be taxed with this potential change.
Do we have an idea what the taxes would be? I don't have that.
It's going to be pennies.
It'll be pennies.
12,844.
12,844.
12,844.
I can appropriately answer that question, unfortunately.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a point, like, any of the money that doesn't get spent, spent out of that account, will go back into the following year, goes back into free cash. So it's not like money's not, it's not like it disappears, for whatever reason. I want you to pay attention to the ceiling above you. The selectmen, prior to this meeting, just signed a patch order, because the kids are in here playing, and it's leaking like in multiple areas. And when I say multiple, I don't mean two, I mean like 30 different areas. We're going to do a temporary patch on some of the curbs, it was a $3,100, which we really don't have, we got to move it from other accounts. Some of that would come from this account that we're talking about right now. This roof here, we have an engineer architect working on designing a new roof board, it's going to be well over $250,000. In the meantime, we'd like to keep patching the thing to stop the rain from coming in. If we don't take care of our buildings, and one of the things that comes up, if there's an emergency, a snow load, leaking, and things like that, to try to squeeze $25,000 out of the finance committee, again, the finance committee has to meet with the select board, it has to be an emergency situation. It's a good insurance policy. I think it's foolish to not save a little bit of money, put it to the side in case an emergency comes up. That's my opinion. I'll do the best I can for the town. That's my opinion, I'll do the best I can for the town, whatever you vote.
Thank you. Okay, so just some details, uh, the board selectman is just giving a comparison as to some of the expenses that could come up that would need to be utilizing the reserve fund to give as an example. Uh, we came up with a rough number, it's probably about less than five dollars per resident, this additional funding that we're discussing right now. So just to give you guys some perspective before we make the decision to make an amendment on the line item that's already been put in the warrant. So with that being said, is there any additional discussion at this time?
Gordon Moore, Barry Road. I know that part of the discussion was, or comment was talking about stabilization fund, even though this is not directly related to that, and that may influence some of the decision, and my question is, how, what's the difference between getting money from stabilization fund compared to being able to get it from the reserve fund? You know, what's that process? Is it easier, harder, you know, in, in to access?
Yes, financial committee?
Okay, if you needed to get funds from the stabilization account, you have to have a town meeting or a special town meeting to appropriate the funds from stabilization. So, you know, you're talking, if you needed the money today, or tomorrow, or next week, you don't have time, because it takes, I don't remember, you know, it takes a couple of weeks to set up a town meeting, from posting the town meeting to having it. So, you know, the advantage is you can get quicker access because it's gonna be voted by both, both the select board and the finance committee, whereas money coming out of stabilization has to go to, it, like I said, a town meeting, a special town meeting.
Thank you. Okay, with that being said, is there any additional discussion around the amendment question? Okay. Okay, so no further discussion, we are going to vote now on the amendment, so we're gonna be voting to change the cost on the reserve fund from seventy-five thousand to fifty thousand, and if the motion passes, we'll have to reevaluate the total amount and then vote on the article eight as amended. So this vote right now is for the amendment. So all those in favor of this article amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The amendment fails by majority. So now, we can vote on the total amount of the original article eight, unless there's any further discussion. Okay, so with no further discussion, we will vote on article eight. All those in favor of the article signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Passes by a majority. Moving on to article nine.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to article ten.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to article eleven.
I move the town raise and appropriate one million seven hundred thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, transfer from the PMS feasibility study account, ten thousand dollars, transfer from the town hall painting account, five thousand nine hundred four dollars, transfer from school air handling account, thirty thousand dollars, transfer from library roof account, eight hundred eighty dollars, transfer from air purifiers account, fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars, transfer from the water well account, fifteen thousand, and transfer from the highway bathroom account, seven thousand five hundred dollars, for a total of one million eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to pay its share of the Narragansett Regional School District budget for FY twenty-four.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion?
Just in case anybody was wondering, in order to finance, in order to be able to fund the school budget this year, we actually had to get a little creative and take monies from accounts that were no longer needed, the funds, or had excess left in them. Um, it was, it was either that, or we didn't know where we were gonna get it from, and we didn't wanna ask the town for a, an override, just for the excess that we were, um, in our school budget.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, is there any additional discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes by a majority. Moving on to article twelve.
Move the town raise and appropriate two hundred thirty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars to pay its share of the Massachusetts Regional Vocational Technical School Budget for FY twenty-four.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to article thirteen.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to article fourteen.
I move the town raise and appropriate twenty-two thousand dollars for the assesses property reevaluation expense account.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on now to article fifteen.
I move the town transfer from free cash, five thousand dollars for the control of invasive nuisance plant species at Queen Lake, including all incidental or related expenses.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article sixteen.
I move the to-town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, Clause Fifty-four, and establish a minimum value of personal property subject to taxation in the amount of eight thousand dollars of fair cash value on personal property counts to be taxed commencing in fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to article seventeen.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to article eighteen.
I move the town transfer from free cash, forty thousand dollars to purchase new turnout gear for the fire department, including all incidental or related costs.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Question?
Good evening, I'm Sylvia Bailey. Um, I'm just looking ahead, April twenty has turnout gear, an unused amount of sixty-five thousand three hundred and sixty. So my question is, um, are we, could we just, after the, why flows out sixty-five thousand three hundred and sixty in articles, funds that are already available? Oh, I guess that was a debt explosion. But I perceive debt, um, turnout gear and turnout gear, two different articles, so I guess, I think I'm answering my own question. Yeah, okay. That we're gonna be taking care of that debt explosion and then we're gonna just raise it in this article.
Question? All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of this article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to article nineteen.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Question?
Margaret Hughes, Little River. Just a question on the funding of this, it says, um, you're looking to use free cash to fund these stipends, and my question would be if these are ongoing, um, how are we going to plan to fund them in additional years?
I don't have an answer for that right now, because it's, I haven't got to next year yet.
Any additional comments or discussion?
I, I, I would have to say that if we don't have the money, then it just doesn't happen.
That's how fair we're people.
No, it's not, but we also work for the municipality and we need a family come first.
Okay, any additional discussion? Seeing no additional discussion, we will move to a vote. All those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes by a majority. Moving on to article twenty.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving to article twenty-one.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to article twenty-two.
I move the town transfer from free cash, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the capital investment fund.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving to article twenty-three.
I move the town transfer from free cash, two hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and three dollars to the stabilization fund.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to article twenty-four.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving to article twenty-five.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving to article twenty-six.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving to article twenty-seven.
I move the article as printed, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously.
I move we dissolve this annual town meeting.
Hearing a second, is, they, all those in favor of dispersing of the meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, we appreciate your attendance in this year's annual town meeting, your participation is much appreciated.